Just time I like to call this meeting to order. Can I ask one please rise for a pledge? Congratulations.
The United States of America. A true republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Main standing for a moment silence. Maybe seated. At this time, if there's no changes to the agenda, I will need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Our first presentation was for the July 4th mayor for the day. Due to COVID, we haven't had a chance to have Ms. Grace come in to receive the honors. You bring your plaque with you, Grace? Come on up.
Is that the younger of you from Porteridge?
Yes, yes. Counsel, this is Grace.
Hi.
As you remember, if you don't remember, Grace has made, well, Grace, go ahead. You tell them what you've done. You've made the masks and all the-
I've made over a thousand masks.
You can, while you speak. Yeah.
So I've made over a thousand masks during the pandemic. I've also sewed pillows for my platform called Stuff With Love. And it's where I sew pillows and donate them to local animal shelters so that the animals have something cozy to lay on. I've also helped for the VFW, the Olympics, Bright Blessings. And I am soon going to be making my own blessing box.
And what title did you hold?
Junior Miss Cosmos, North Carolina, 2020.
Wanted to bring her in so she can meet everyone. Everyone, this is Grace. Grace, everyone.
Yes.
Want to hold up your plaque?
Does she get to pass any laws or make any proclamations as she's mayor for the day?
I'd like to thank all of y'all for choosing me as mayor of the day because Michael here has done a lot for me and I really appreciate it. And I really love helping out my community and getting out there. And sometimes it's hard for my mom to keep up with me. And she's probably really tired. But I keep pushing her and telling her that I keep wanting to doing more. And I earned both my Presidential Service Awards and I soon hope to earn my third one.
Well, congratulations, Grace. And for 14 years old, she's accomplished more than most of us. Thanks for coming in this evening for this. And you have a good night. Keep up the good work.
I will.
Mayor, can we get a picture?
All right, come on.
Yes, now. Come on up there and get your picture too.
Oh, I heard that.
Is that C O S N O S? C O S N O S, okay, thank you.
Our next presentation goes to Mia Familia, Joe.
He has not arrived yet.
Oh, yeah, he's here.
Hayden just came up and told me he had not arrived yet. I can check with Hayden.
He's downstairs. He made a left and made another left.
Okay, let me see if I can locate him. Would you like me to pause for a minute? No, thank you.
Sure. At the last meeting, Joe couldn't make it when we were recognizing those in the community that went above and beyond during this pandemic. Joe's the owner of Mia Familia. You can stand up. He could let us-
Hi.
During the pandemic before, for years, Joe's always helped out the town. He's been the primary pizza award giver during the winning classrooms during the Tree Initiative. And during this COVID pandemic, he, I'm going to let you take the stage here and tell us how many pizzas you've, lunches you've given away during, to schoolchildren.
School, I did the schools, I did the, the school kids, did families, I did Union County Sheriff's Office, couple hospitals. I helped out with pizza, with feeding. What to get, what is it called again? Gift to Given. I did pizzas for Steve for Gift to Given, Matthew's Police, Novant, the hospital in Union County, I did them also. So I must have done countless of pizzas. I would say gave away about 200 pizzas.
200? Sure, that's not a little bit more with that many that came around?
With the what?
200 pizzas? That's about two, yeah, that's about right, okay. Considering all the lunches that you passed on for the schools. So when the schools, when the schools were forced out early for the pandemic, Joe went to work making sure that the schoolchildren had lunches delivered to their houses, homes also, and they could pick up in front.
Pick up, yeah.
Pick up and go. So in recognition to your service to Union County and to our town, we want to give you a little plaque to hang up on your wall.
Just, just for the record, Mr. Mayor, Joe and I also plan our vacations together. We just stay at adjacent properties.
Just different properties. Oh, yeah, there you go, that's right.
Joe, we appreciate you.
Thank you. And we were in the same property.
Yeah. Different buildings.
Well, I appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. That moves us on to the public comments. At this time, I will open up public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and will act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in their conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard and we ask you to respect our town employees' rights to a fair hearing on your grievance. First speaker, Amanda Falkenberry.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. As I stand before you, again, in the past three years, we've had two council resignations, and we have one again. I've received a number of inquiries from individuals throughout the town as to whether I'm still interested in the council seat. The answer is yes. And to remind you again, I am the next highest vote getter, both this time and the time before when we had a resignation. So I'm asking you to stop and think. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Kim Woods?
Kim or Tim?
That says Kim. You can come verify it for yourself.
I'm no longer allowed to ask those questions, I thought so.
I have a little smirk on my face as I said it.
Good evening, Mayor Alvarez, Town Council. My name is Tim Woods. I am the junior vice commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of North Carolina. I'm also a nine-year U.S. Navy veteran, a board member of the Queen City Honor Flight, and past post commander of the post there across the street, 2423 James B. Crump Post. I am standing in front of all you today to ask for a donation from the Town of Indian Trail for the Queen City Honor Flight. The Honor Flight is designed to bring World War II veterans back up to Washington, D.C. to see their memorial at the mall for more than likely one last time. As well as we know, we go to the changing of the guard ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington where they have, do what?
You do realize you're on the agenda to speak, right?
Yeah, this is, well, you said my name, right?
Well, you wrote, you wrote in for public comments. You're actually on the, the agenda next.
Listen, you call my name, I come up.
All right, well, you can speak now, go ahead. Go ahead, Kim.
Give you the knife hand. As we go to the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington, the veterans for the Queen City Honor Flight have front row head of line privileges. So that means they get to be in front of everybody where normal people can't just come up and walk up and stand. They get their front row right there. We also visit the Iwo Jima, that's the Marine Corps, if anybody didn't know that one, the Air Force, and the 9/11 memorial at the Pentagon, if time permits and weather permitting. With the decline of our World War II veteran population, we've now phased into Korea and Vietnam War veterans as being priority to go on one of these flights. The mission is for camaraderie, education, and most of all, healing. These missions are only one day, which means so much to the veterans with their fellow counterparts as they go to visit their memorials. The one-day mission is around for 100 veterans. We normally take around 100 veterans and 60 caregivers and staff on one of these flights. There is no cost to the veteran, and therefore, we're asking for donations to be helped up to offset the cost. Currently, we're backed up two mission flights due to the COVID. We were supposed to go in the springtime. And then the National Network of Honor Flights said we weren't allowed to fly. We were all grounded. And then we were supposed to go again in October, and because of COVID, we're still grounded. So right now, we're trying to probably make up for one or two flights next year if we can, but it's an expensive process. So we're trying to catch up for a couple more missions next year, maybe do two or three missions next year. And that's with our Unum Ultimido Miso, which is Latin for One Last Mission for our veterans. And I have, not going to yield my time of three minutes, but I brought up another veteran up here, Pat Tompkins, who will speak on behalf of his mission that we did up to D.C. So he's my testimony right here. I would bring Mr. Crump because that was his first time flying in 70 years, but unfortunately, he's no longer with us. So Pat Tompkins has the floor.
Counsel, you have no objection to doing this at this moment?
I have, I have no objection.
So they can leave?
Yes, I have no objection.
Counsel, thank you very much. I was honored to take a Korean veteran on the last Honor Flight we did. Some of you may have known Jack Poindexter. He was a resident here for many years, Korean veteran. He was unsure if he's going to make it on the list, and he did. It was like a little kid at Christmas, walking to the post. He was, I got to go, I'm on the list. I said, I know, Jack. And after we got back from the trip, shortly thereafter, he passed away. But to see the veterans get up there and mingle with guys they were in the same place with many, many years ago, share stories, meet old friends, it's well worth it. And as Tim said, it's a one-day trip. And we had, I think one lady was 102 or 3 years old down into the upper 80s ago. And none of them slowed down a bit. They were fantastic. But the whole point is I'm a retired history teacher in this county. And if we don't let the history go through, it's living history that needs to go up there. It's nothing selfish. They've earned it. They don't ask for anything special. It's for us, the community, who's still here and able to do it for them that needs to be done. Jack said he'd never been to Washington, D.C. And he smiled the whole time he was up there, all the way back on the flight. Jack, was it worth it? Oh, Lord, yes, he said. It was well worth it. I'm glad I got to go. So Tim is here asking, you know, for any kind of support we can get to get these veterans up there. I'm a veteran myself, in the United States Army, did one tour in Vietnam. But we need to get the older guys up there and show them the respect that they earn and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Comments?
Comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kim. Go ahead.
First off, thank you for your service. My family's had a lot of relatives serving military. Mr. Morris here has also served. I appreciate your service. I think what you're doing is great. I had a grandfather survive European theater, World War II. My grandfather survived European theater, World War I. So both were lucky to survive. And all I can tell you is greatly appreciate what you do and I hope we can help you out. Thank you.
Thank you. One last public comment. Kathy, you had one to read?
Yes, I did have one.
Do you want to explain the process to them?
Oh, right. Gentlemen, it is the town's policy-
Would you like to pay for the money part? Is that what you're asking?
You used to be funny. It is the town policy that when you present, it's at the following meeting that they make their decision.
So you don't need us no more?
I don't need you. You can, I'm, I'm done with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I got a question.
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
Since we're kind of out of order here, but that's, that's all good.
We'll stay out of order. It's usually better that way.
How many Union County or Indian Trail residents have had the honor to go on these Honor Flights?
I've done two of the past Honor Flights. We've had majority of the veterans, let's see, the first flight, I think we took around 87 veterans. And I would say half of them were Union County residents or, you know, Indian Trail residents. Plus of the caregivers was about 50% also of that number because a lot of times the caregiver is a, is not a family member, but it's usually like a veteran that wants to help and, and, you know, they get the experience also. And we also try to take a high schooler or two with us, you know, just so they could see it also firsthand and get the experience and stories. Last time we went, it was probably about the same thing. I think out of the 100 we took, I think about 50 to 60 were Union County residents. Now, there are a couple of the Arlington flights. There's one out of Asheville. There's one out of Myrtle Beach. And I think, I believe Greensboro is starting another Honor Flight hub up there. So we, as the Queen City Honor Flight, were taking pretty much most of the state of North Carolina from Hickory all the way over to the coast. And we were dipping into South Carolina as well, so. But usually, it's a majority because we go around to the local coffee houses and the breakfast is when we were allowed to in the free world back then, about six months ago. So we get a lot of them, you know, the Purple Hearts we team up with also, and a lot of the Purple Heart guys get to go on the flights. Mike Stubbs, he's one of the biggest, you know, contributors, also helps out with the Honor Flight. So a lot of the Union County Indian Trail residents do, or, you know, members of our post, they make out because it's around this area. But like I said, it's predominantly, if we get the World War II vets, they get priority number one because of their age. And the only other ones that get priority are critically wounded or if they have a severe illness. And that could be from the Iraqi war to, you know, World War II, they'll have priority also.
Yeah, thank you. You answered my second question with that, so appreciate it. Thank you.
I got ESPN.
ESPN. How much do we have left in our fund?
I don't think we even be gone for-
We haven't done anything.
None yet?
Yeah.
And we earmarked, what, 4,000 this year, 5,000? Do you remember, anyone?
We haven't done any events for the town.
I think, I think he's right.
We'll, we'll ask Mr. McLauren to confirm that, yeah. But we have, we have a couple.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming, but also thank you for your service in the past in the military, but also currently what you're doing. It's invaluable, and we do really thank you for that.
Thank you. No other questions, comments? Have a good night. Thank you.
You can read it from there. Okay, one more public comment.
This one is from Jim White. He says, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and Town Manager, and welcome Town Manager to Indian Trail. I come to you tonight with a saddened heart after learning that Ms. Shirley Howe has resigned as councilwoman. Either as a citizen or on the council, Ms. Howe was always true to her beliefs as to what was best for Indian Trail. One of my fondest memories was in the old council chamber where you could find Ms. Towns, Ms. Howe, and Mr. Gay sitting on the back row discussing the day's agenda. One council meeting, there was an empty seat on the back row, and Ms. Howe invited me to join them. That was a highlight for me to attend a council meeting with commentary from this group of distinguished citizens. As some of you are aware, for many years, I was a snowbird escaping the winter by going to Florida. I always listened to recording of the council meeting and emailed council members my support or disapproval of events that occurred. Upon my return every year, Ms. Howe always asked, are you going back to Florida this winter? Which my answer was yes. One year upon my return, she asked me the same question, and this time, my answer was no. Councilwoman Howe then encouraged me to, let me back up and restate this, she insisted that I join a committee or board, or board here at Indian Trail. The only experience I had was that I liked to partake of Indian Trail's finest spirits. That's why today I proudly serve on the ABC Board. Thank you for this time allowing me to reminisce in my joyful moments with my friend Shirley. You just never know how the smallest gestures has lasting meaning to someone. Thank you very much. Jim White.
Thank you. At this time, there's council feedback and any comments? No, I'll close the public comment and yield the floor to Captain James.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. There before you, you can peruse at your leisure the stats for the month of August. A couple of things I wanted to point out that kind of stood out. The, our crashes for the month of August were at 106, which tend to be on the rise up again. The, I don't want to say that the, well, we'll say the majority of them are resulting from the Super Street project on 74, but they are happening all over town. Out of those numbers there, you had, for the month of August, 211 reportable offenses with a total call for service at 4,669. 2,672 of those were preventative patrols and business checks. So we'd like to pat the guys on the back for that because they are staying busy as they can trying to protect these businesses and these homes and neighborhoods. Anybody have any questions?
Were we seeing any decrease on the traffic accidents on 74, or do you think people are getting used to it, or is it still the same?
I won't say that the reason or the at-fault positions that we hold for these, these crashes are all resulting from those turns. But the Wesley Chapel to the Indian Trail Fairview Corridor tend to be the biggest problem area that we're having in town.
Now, if you have an intersection that has an exorbitant number of crashes, do y'all report that to the DOT or the state that maybe they could make some changes?
Well, they're reported through the crash reports that we do. Because when, once we do a crash report in any location, that's reported to the state, has to be reported to the state within 10 days. Now, I couldn't give, I could give you a definitive number, but I couldn't do it tonight. I had to take a little bit of research. But we talked about that Wesley Chapel intersection. A lot of it results from inattention and a lot of results from feet or reduced speed. People are just carrying too much speed through those intersections and they can't get stopped.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, with this information, I mean, okay, so we've had, what, a year now we've had the Super Street, a little more?
Yeah.
So there should be enough data to either support that this is a safer street. That's what it was sold to us on. So where do we go? If you could pull that data for us and say, you know, this is the recs that we had a year, you know, previous year or the year before that, and this is the recs we had this year. Can we not take that information then to CARPO or DOT to get some kind of, you know, action done? Because, you know, every day, when I'm, you know, now that I'm at home, I, in my backyard, I hear the squealing wheels because I'm right there by the Super Street and then the crash. And it's every single day, it feels like there's, there's a crash out there. And, you know, to me, it is not safer by any means than it, than it was before. There may not be any T-bones out there or somebody died, but it still seems like there's a lot more crashes and a lot more aggravation for everyone.
So Senator Johnson was here recently, and I asked that very question as we've seen an uptick in accidents on 74 with the Super Street, based on the proposal from Old Monroe Road. One of the things we could possibly do is that since the Super Street has come online, we've also had the Monroe bypass, which means that theoretically, the traffic count on 74 should have been reduced, which would then possibly, with a safer street, produce even lesser accidents. Would it be possible, and I can put that to you in writing, just so that way, you know, you get sort of the information that we need. But would it be possible to sort of do a compare, to compare the traffic accident count on 74 prior to the Super Street, which would also be prior to the Monroe Road, and current, not in terms of just count, like five accidents versus two, that, that sort of thing? Some simple comparison, because that is something that we could possibly go to DOT. Now, the DOT is probably going to come back to us and tell us that it's still a safer street no matter what we say. But I am not against, you know, your position in that. Let's bring it to them and see what we can do. Because every time you turn on, every time I get to 74, you always see some either close misses, people driving too fast, people not really understanding how to go ahead and make the turn. That also causes some issues as well. So Captain James, I'll send you an email sort of asking for the data that we need.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to give a kudos to your officers out there today with the stoplight was out over at Sun Valley High School, the intersection. They were working hard to direct, that's a hard place to direct traffic.
It really is.
And it was hot. So anyway, kudos to those guys.
Yeah, I'll be sure to tell them.
Yeah, they did a good job. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll need a motion approved if there's no questions.
So moved.
Mr. Morris made the motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Aaron? Aaron, I need a little help here. So- Aaron, I need a little help here. So, um, we have, um, evoke up first for a vote, and Aaron's going to give a, you can give a quick explanation, can you not, or do you want me to wing it?
No, I can.
Okay.
Well, we'll do it before the time.
Right.
Okay.
It is just up for a vote.
Yes.
Um, but I believe, Brandy, do you have something?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, during the August twenty-fifth public hearing, um, there were concerns expressed about traffic impacts on this project. The applicant has heard those concerns and would like to work through an infrastructure agreement with the town of Indian Trail. For this reason, they're requesting that this item be postponed until the September twenty-second meeting. The applicant is available here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, that's, uh, pretty cut and dry. We're basically, all we, all we can do is grant them the pro- the, all you can do is grant them the extension to work on the agreement and come back with it, or you can just vote tonight.
I, I would, I would be good for tabling it till they work on some agreement.
Got a consensus?
I'm, I'm.
Okay. Postponement is-
So, do we make a motion to postpone it?
Do they need a motion?
Please, please.
All right.
And specify the date.
Okay, September-
But before we do that, did, do we need to give them an opportunity to speak, or, no?
If you would like to hear the, hear it, you can ask them a specific question on the, but I don't believe you've worked out the details of it yet, have you?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'm happy to talk if, um-
It's, the hearing's closed.
Sure.
Unless it's in specifics to what you have for the infrastructure agreement, no more comments are allotted.
So then, I'll go ahead and make a motion to delay the requested action for C Z two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-seven to September, the Town Council meeting, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty.
Will that be enough time? Will that be enough time?
I'm trying to work it out. Um-
You can do October, the first meeting in October.
Yeah, if you need to the first meeting of October, that'll grant you a full month.
Right, so, um-
But if you're ready on the twenty-second.
I had thought, I had thought, um, we, a month would be okay, coming in on the twenty-second, twenty-fifth to the twenty-second would be okay, but I'm working, I'm not able to negotiate it. I have, um, my attorney in Wes Henson trying to work through it, so I don't have an exact timing of, of the nature of-
Okay, so council, can we grant them the one month, and if they're ready ahead of time?
Yeah.
However much time you need, I would think.
Yeah, just keep us updated.
I, I will amend, I will actually rescind my motion, and I'll make a new motion, all right? So, I'll make a motion to, um, delay this item for action, which is C Z two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-seven to September, sorry, October thirteenth, which is the first meeting in, for the Town Council in October.
Okay.
Septem- uh, October thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mc- I can tell you-
I know you don't-
No, go ahead.
We have made the amendment. We're not making any left-hand turns out of Rosetta, right turn in, right turn out. So, we do not want, we're taking it away from seventy-four, and I just want you to know that we're totally, personally, I don't want any accidents in front of my property, and I've made that decision. We talked about making a left hand to turn. Um, I'm putting it in a median there. You cannot make the left. Just wanted to let you know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Ms. McIntyre. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Sun Valley Marketplace request.
Mayor and Council, uh, we have a, a similar request, uh, but Mr. Wes Henson will speak to that. That's okay. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Um, Wes Henson apply, uh, appearing on behalf of the applicant for Sun Valley Marketplace, which is C Z twenty-twenty-zero-zero, I think, one. Um, and we're appearing, I'm appearing today to request a postponement of that application until October thirteenth, too. That is largely to permit the applicant the, the time. There's been some discussion towards, um, amending their application to include an elevate that involves, uh, contribution of funds for public facility, facilities. Um, and in addition, I think with the recent resignation of Ms. Howe, to allow a new council member to come on board to get up to speed on the project.
Counsel, you've again the same choice, choices as before. We need a motion for either the delay to the thirteenth or on the project itself.
Jerry, yes, I need to say.
Jerry.
Uh, you think we have enough time for both of those on the thirteenth?
They're simple, they should be simple agreements being presented, or-
Do y'all have a preference to split them up, or to put them in one night?
Uh, the preference would be to split them up, to give them the time to present properly.
Would that be a problem if we were to slide it by one council meeting for the-
Totally in your discretion.
To the second meeting in October?
That would be my preference, but, you know.
Which would be fourteen and twenty-three, the twenty-seventh.
I'll just go with the pace.
Okay, all right. We'll need a motion then. Jerry.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to table this until, uh, C Z twenty-twenty-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, um, to the October twenty-seventh meeting, twenty-twenty.
It's twenty-seventh, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Morse has made the motion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Brings us to new business. Um, Board of Elections notification. This one's real quick. Uh, since Ms. Howe resigned in a out-of-cycle seat, it's required by state, by the state for us to have an out-of-cycle, unexpired seat in the twenty-twenty-one municipal elections. So, there will be two four-year terms and one unexpired two-year term. The Board of Elections has been notified, and this just serves as notice for the general public. Okay? Brings us to the Storm Order Committee.
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, sent you an email on, I think, August twenty-sixth, letting you know that since Shirley has been, has basically retired from council, that has relieved her seat with the first chairman to the Storm Water Committee. So, I'd like for one of y'all to, um, I guess elect yourselves to be the chair.
So, without much discussion, um, I want to make a nomination.
Okay.
I want to nominate Mr. Todd Barber to get on the Storm Water Committee and solve the water problems.
Excellent choice. Excellent choice. Uh, our next meeting's October eighth, Mr. Barber. So-
October eighth.
Yeah, we're quarterly, so we don't meet but four times a year, so.
So, do we have, we have to essentially vote on this, right?
Well, first, you have to-
Yes.
So, I'd, I'd like to make an official nomination of Mr. Todd Barber. Hopefully he accepts to become the chairman of the Storm Water Committee, replacing Ms. Howe. It's tough, some, some tough shoes to fill, but I think you can do it.
You okay with that, Todd?
That's okay. Hmm. I think it's a great choice.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. McIntyre has made the nomination, Mr. Barber, to replace Ms. Howe as the Storm Order Committee Chair. If there's no other further nominations, we'll need a, all in favor.
It's unanimous.
It's unanimous.
Mr. Barber, thank you for volunteering yourself, sir.
I like to thank my friends.
Thank you, Todd.
That brings us to the resolution adopting Union County Economic Development Incentive Grant Program.
Thank you. The, uh, resolution to adopt the Union County Economic Development Incentive Grant Program guidelines is up for your consideration. Um, my understanding is that Chris, thank you, Chris Platte is, um, here to address your questions. Uh, Mr. Platte is the director of the Monroe Union County Economic Development, and, um, before you vote, um, he is here to field questions to the extent that the council will recognize him.
Are there any questions for Mr. Platte?
Anything you want to add, Mr. Platte, or we're good?
No, I think we're great.
Thanks for taking the time to come.
My pleasure.
Okay, so if there's no questions for the resolution, we need a motion to pass the resolution.
Um, I'll make a motion to, um, adopt the Union County Economic Development Incentive Grant Program.
Resolution.
Huh?
The resolution.
Yeah, I say, I'll make a resolution to adopt the Union County Economic Development Incentive Grant Program.
Okay.
Number R two-zero-zero-nine-zero-eight dash one.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre has made the motion to adopt. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. It's good to see you, Chris.
So, attorney, quick question, excuse me, quick question for you. This begins the open, um, hearing portion. Is that what happens now, citizens can comment, and at the subsequent meeting, and then, uh, two weeks, we vote on this again, or, or is this all done?
The, Aaron, I-
Ms., Ms. Quinn.
Oh, I yield to the Town Manager.
Sorry, Mr. McLaurin.
Mr. Canada.
Yeah.
As I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is actually a two-part. First, you have now approved the resolution, which you've done. The next item on your agenda will be to call for a public hearing.
Oh.
And, and then you'll do the public hearing at the next, the next meeting, and you're identifying your motion, the amount, and who it's for.
Yeah, I'm a little short, so I couldn't see that high on the page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that correct? That is correct, yes. If, if you don't mind.
The guidelines just establish a framework in which you can then apply the incentives.
Yep.
And then now we're discussing the incentives.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion for the hearing, or did you?
I, well, I can't make the motion unless if council members have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
All right, so, I'll make a motion to call for a public hearing. Um, it says there, the attorney should be the one doing that, right?
I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
Yeah, please do that.
I was just, I was going to say, the town is just, to give some context, the town's been asked to consider a five-hundred-thousand-dollar economic development incentive grant specifically for the Town Center LLC, and that is what is being, the town is being asked to consider, the council's being asked to consider. That will require, as you pointed out, a public hearing, so I would suggest that the council make a motion to schedule that hearing for September twenty-second at its regular meeting.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes, if, uh, when you, if you'll just read the purpose and the information when you make your motion, I think we'll be good to go.
Oh, so I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
To call.
To call a public hearing, sorry. To call for a public hearing, and the purpose is to consider the incentive grant to the Town Center LLC, and that hearing will be on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty, Town Council regular meeting, beginning at six-thirty.
Perfect.
And the amount.
Yes, sir.
I think you need to specify the amount.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
We, this one we covered, the Queen City.
Yeah, we covered the Queen City donation request, which will be brought back for the next council meeting. Ms. Quinn?
Yes, absolutely, September twenty-second.
Okay, next is the vacant council seat. As you know, Ms., Ms. Howe has resigned, and it's in our policy to, for, um, council to make nominations, uh, in conjunctions with said policy. So, I can open up the floor now for council to have a discussion on nominations or any other procedures, therefore, notwithstanding, so to say. Mr. Barber?
I'd like to make a nomination and then give a reason, okay? All right, I think that's what it says here. I nominate David Cone to fill the vacancy on council. Um, I do this after a lot of thought, considering it was Ms. Howe's seat. Uh, she served the town of Indian Trail honorably, very well, and I think she would be pleased with that nomination. Uh, I realize the seat belongs to the people. It's an elected position. Uh, Mr. Cone has won two elections, both times with the most votes. So, I think he is willing to serve, and I think the people deserve and would be better served by someone who has won elections. He's got eight years of experience up here, so we get some, I don't think anyone's got a better resume. Uh, I think he supports our Sheriff's Department, our parks, and things that are important to the citizens of Indian Trail, and, and I think nominating David Cone is the right thing to do.
Okay, there's a nomination on the table. If there's any other nominations, counsel, this is, if you, if there's a nomination, I'll therefore speak Mr. Barber's nomination or Mr. Cone. All in favor of Mr. Cone's nomination? Let the record stand, that was unanimous. Mr. Cone, are you willing to serve the last year of her, or a year and one month, or a year and eight weeks? Okay. Um, okay, so council seat filled, we will need to swear him in.
I have the, I have the blank document. If you'd like to do it now, on a Bible.
Yes.
That's, that's absolutely.
Then he would be ready for the next meeting.
Yep.
Mayor Ogars, will you be swearing him in?
You're already over there. You can do it. Um, I mean, you or me, you choose, your choice.
Mr. Cone, can you come up, sir, please?
Raise your bow.
Oh, wow.
Thank you for being willing to serve, Mr. Cone.
Thank you for, uh, having confidence in you.
That would be wonderful, sir.
Thank you.
I was handed, I was handed one.
Ida Tom.
Jesus only swear.
Jesus only swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution laws of the United States.
Constitution laws of the United States.
And the Constitution laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
At my office as a council member of the county.
At my office as a council member of Indian.
Of course.
My God.
So, yeah. All right, thank you. I can push your chair if you'd like.
It's up to you guys, I can do it.
Yeah?
Well, you have the choice now.
Bring him right here.
Where did Shirley, where was Shirley?
Now, we'll, we'll get the permanent place when Mayor figures out next week, but now, that would just say right now.
I can share my screen a few minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let the record reflect that David Cone has filled the vacant council seat vacated by Ms. Shirley Howe for the remainder of her term.
Thank you.
Expiring at the end of two thousand twenty-one, or first week in December of two thousand twenty-one. Okay, that brings us to, um, grant application for National Fitness Campaign. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Cone, welcome back. Nice to see you up on the dais again. Uh, as you know, the Park and Rec Department has always been able and willing to explore new grants and funding opportunities. One of these opportunities that presents itself is the National Fitness Campaign, also known as N F C. N F C believes that fitness should be accessible and free to all those that seek it. The scope of the entire project is a hundred and- The scope of the entire project is $130,000, and if we are awarded the grant, NFC would cover about $25,000, with a $80,000 balance remaining. While the town typically likes to see grants more in the 50/50 range, we believe that a sponsorship opportunity may come in and absorb the additional cost. I come to you tonight to seek approval for the grant application. This is a step in the application. This is a non-binding commitment, and there are no dollars attached at this time. The application, if submitted, will be submitted later this month, and a decision from the grant committee heard by the end of the year. I have the opportunity to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Mr. Morris?
Pretty soon, we're going to be reviewing the master park plan. When is that scheduled from local council?
Absolutely. So the master plan has, has kicked off. We've done some internal work as, as well as some, some conversations with a consultant. Hopefully, if the timeframe goes, you know, as we planned, towards the end of November, beginning of December of this year.
And as part of that master park plan, is this included in it?
So there aren't any specific projects or programs that, that we're seeking, you know, in the master plan, it's more community input. So if there's a community input or a trend that's coming from national standards that suggests outdoor fitness or fitness equipment, that would be identified. This specific item would not be identified.
And the math kind of messed me up. You said it was 130,000 estimated cost?
Correct.
25,000 donation from this particular.
Correct.
Agency left 85,000?
That sounds a bit better.
So 85 and 25 is 110?
I'm sorry, yes, you are correct. It is 110. So, you know, yes, you are correct.
All right, that was it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, I do, sorry, but let me yield to anybody else before it comes down to me. Mr. Barber? Mr. Cohn? All right, my question to you is, you're, you essentially are asking the town to sort of commit about $85,000 towards that. Should we be successful in, in being granted the, this $25,000?
Potentially. So i- if we were to submit the application, and if we were to be awarded the grant, there, there obviously remains a balance on the table that, that needs to be picked up. NFC is very proactive with, with seeking sponsorship, as well as our department is. We think that there are some candidates locally that, that would fit the, the mission and the vision of NFC and partner with the town. Those conversations have not occurred yet. You know, that, that pitch has not been, been drawn up. I believe that there would be some dollars on the table that the town would have to come to. That exact figure is undetermined at this point.
So then the second question is, you need to submit before the end of September?
Correct.
Right. If we were to ask to discuss this amongst ourselves, or just with other questions we have, and then come back to the September 22nd meeting and make a decision, then would that give you enough time to be able to submit the, the grant application?
I believe. Sure, sure. I believe that they're submitting, their, their submitted request is prior to the next meeting. Absolutely.
And you may have said, is this grant, or the $110,000 specifically for one thing, or?
Correct, so i- it's, it's a fitness pad. So the, the pad has the ability, I think it has 21 different stations or activities in it. So you can fit about 25 people on, on the pad at one time. So i- it is a kind of multi-generational, multi-use. You can be, you know, a, a CrossFit athlete, or you can be someone that's just working out for the first time and have the ability to use the pad.
Okay, which leads to my second question. Second question being, how much money's left to, to spend on the parks? There's, you know, what was, eight and a half million dollar bond?
Yes, so.
There's money left, so how much money is there?
I believe there's about 1.7 left.
Okay, so would it make the decision any easier if it was 1.7 million left? And, and have we just, I mean, you guys may have discussed what you want to put in there, but if you got 1.7 million left, and somebody's going to give you $25,000 extra for that money, is that what you're saying, they're giving you, $25,000 basically is a grant?
Correct.
And then $85,000?
Yeah, so, so again, and I, and I appreciate Councilmember Morris, so total scope of the project is 130, so 130 minus 25 is, is 105. So essentially, the remaining balance, if no sponsorship or, or any additional dollars come from outside of the town, it'll be 105. It would be the town's responsibility. Again, it's, it's our thinking that there would be the opportunity to have sponsored dollars come in. Again, if we apply for the grant or given the grant, and the sponsorship dollars do not come in, or we don't feel comfortable moving forward with, with a dollar figure, we shake their hand and say, "Thank you for your time," and we look forward to applying next time.
All right, I'm, I'm just curious, if you're going to get free money, would you have done it anyway, whether you got the grant or not? I mean, what was next on the agenda for parks?
So the, the next on the agenda is truly the master plan. I, I think that that is a, a document that, that we can hold up and say, "This is what the, what the community and public wants." Based on the amount of use that the fitness equipment gets at Crooked Creek Park, and the amount of activity that's over at Chestnut Square Park, which would be the, the proposed location, I think it would be a natural fit.
Mr. Mayor, Mike. So, I, is there a picture of the pad, something that we could?
Absolutely. It's a, it's about, it's roughly about 40 foot square. Has a, essentially at the front part, a wall that, that spans the 40 feet. If you're familiar with like TRX equipment, that hooks that you can do, you know, dips and pulls and things of that nature. Then there are different lanes, if you will, and each lane has a, a fitness box that you can do different activities, whether it's jumping or some sort of calisthetics on that.
So the one turn is the fitness pad and the equipment associated with performing the exercise.
Correct, correct. It is, it's total there.
All right. Is there, sorry. No, go ahead. Is there any cost of installation?
There is. So the installation cost, from speaking with, with Mr. McLam and Mr. Huntsinger, we believe we could do in-house. From the company, again, this is turnkey, they come in, we, we are hands-off. It's 40,000. Again, they say that you can do it in-house, and there have been other folks that have successfully done it in-house.
So council, if I can just say this, we don't have to spend any money right now. It's giving them permission to seek that grant. If this thing gets online or gets approved, it's probably December. By the time everything goes into effect, hopefully, we'll be beyond COVID. People can get outside and actively enjoy the parks, which is a real compliment to our, our town. So I, I have no, I have no further questions, and I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
How much time and energy, money, dollars will it take to do this grant?
Sure. So I've sat on maybe two or three conference call, with, conference calls with NFC. The grant, i- if you've given approval, will be submitted hopefully by mid next week. Time built into, into our schedule. No sort of research or, you know, consultant or anything of that nature.
You'll need a motion to move forward.
Yeah.
So council, you guys are okay with me making a motion on this? I mean, if you have no more questions? So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Parks and Recs Department, led by Mr. Kramer, to go ahead and apply for the grant application for the National Fitness Campaign. It is expected that the grant award will be $25,000, with the town possibly be having to contribute $105,000, should no sponsorships be found. Also noted in that motion is that the town can also, if awarded the grant, simply walk away, and nothing will be spent from town's money.
Ms. McIntyre has made the motion, oh, Mr. McLaurin.
I'm going to ask the council a question, if I might.
Would, has part of your motion allow the staff to look to see if we could use some of that bond money to cover that cost? I think, you remember, Mr. Cohen suggested that we, we have 1.7 million dollars, and if need be, could we use some of that money, provided that finance and the attorneys and everybody else is good with that?
It's a park item, I would think that's appropriate.
So, I, I would like to amend, I would like to add that to my motion that the man, that to instruct the manager, the finance director, to find the funds where appropriate, including using monies from the park bonds. I think that's still remaining to the tune of approximately 1.7 million dollars. Is that okay, Ms. Quinn?
Ms. McIntyre has made the motion, all in favor?
Mr. Head had his hand up.
Okay, I didn't see that, okay.
Sorry.
Let the record stand, the motion was unanimous.
I got you, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to manager's report.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Yes, sir. Just a few quick items. I want to let you know that everyone in the community and on staff and on the council has made me feel very welcome, and I certainly appreciate that. I can find my ways to the bathroom, the exits, and my office, so, or the people's office. I've had an opportunity to meet with several of you individually, and we've had some good conversations. I'd like to continue those moving into the future, and we'll certainly call you tomorrow to get on your schedule. The other thing I want to mention to you, you asked about the donation earlier in the meeting, it is 4,500 that has been budgeted this year for that. Also, I just want to take just a moment to share with you a couple comments that we've received from the public very recently. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, either a town of Indian Trail employee or one of our contractors is out serving the public. And a lot of times, we do it, and you don't even know it's been done, but it's been done. But it is nice to get the thank yous that come out there. And Adam had recently received a, a comment from a Kim Green that said, "I want to personally thank you and the Public Works team for the work that you did in taking care of the sidewalks and our wonderful community and our carefree community." I was amazed and surprised at the number of neighbors to see the project taking, being completed so fast. No one expected it so soon, and in such a professional and decent manner. And it goes on to say, "I personally watched them from afar, as the team communicated and cared for one another. I know that they're still working, I just wanted to know how great their work, their work was." The, the Park and Rec folks, they have run several programs, the Pickup Lual, the Christmas in July, popcorn and movies and pop-up programs. And I've got a whole list of comments from the public about how much they have enjoyed that, as we've had to be creative during COVID virus time. The last thing I'll mention, Mr. Mayor and, and board members, I will be sending you some training opportunities that have come out from the School of Government, and some opportunities from the League of Municipalities. I'll send that out to you as a board. If any of you are interested in pursuing some of those, please let me know, and we'll work to get you hooked up. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you.
Council comments? Do you have the?
The bonus card in for you.
For me?
Yeah, no, I haven't called you yet, but my card is for you since I was missing one. And Mrs. Quinn was trying enough to revive me. So, Councilmember Barber?
I'd like to remind the public, we have openings on the Planning Board and Board of Adjustments, if you'd like to apply. Next is, I'd like to welcome Mr. Cohn to the council. Thank you for serving. I look forward to working with you to serve the citizens of Indian Trail, and really glad that you chose to do this. I'd like to give a shout-out for prayers and thoughts to the Bill Wooton family. Bill Wooton, wonderful citizen of Indian Trail, served on the Lions Club for 40 years, great Christian man, loving husband, wonderful family. I turned at his funeral today, over 200 people at Hopewell Baptist Church. So my thoughts and prayers to them, and just letting him know that the family, that, man, what a wonderful person he really was, and he's, town will miss a, a great person like Mr. Wooton. I'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership role he took in the nominating process here of finding someone to serve on council. Thank you. Appreciate that. And also, again, like to welcome, after seeing all the, you in the paper and all the social media, we've got Big News Mike here, and once again, welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Councilmember Head?
David, welcome aboard. Glad to have you on, you're a welcome addition. Michael, also welcome, and looking forward to our conversation tomorrow morning. Captain, as always, we thank you and your staff for, for all that you do. This is one of our shortest meetings. I don't know what the record is, but this is, this is, oh, okay, I get the, the sign. All right, Mr. Morris, I'm ready. Thanks for everybody coming. I'm out of here.
I'd just like to say it's not a coincidence, it's my first meeting, and that Karen's not here, maybe that's the difference.
Ah, there we go.
She's not here to defend herself. Thank you. Councilmember Morris?
First off, congratulations, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Look forward to working with you for the next 16, 18 months, for sure. Grace Laney, wow, what an inspiration, 14 years old and have done all that. That's pretty amazing. I had mentioned to Mr. Barber that, you know, if you look in the dictionary and under the definition of overachiever, is probably a picture of her, because that's just, I'm very impressed. So this, this whole appointment process, I wanted to talk a little bit about it with my, with my few minutes. You know, the first thing I just want to say is that elections have consequences. So it's, it's not a popularity contest, it's not next in line, it's the, the voters out there decided who they wanted to be on this council, and I think that the council has made a, a good choice in representing the wishes of the voter, voters. Part of the process is, we as council members, one-on-one, we, we were talking from the day after Shirley resigned, and we thought about how we were going to go about appointing this council, new council person. The last time council, Mayor Pro Tim McIntyre was appointed, and it was fairly simple, because as a group of council members then, we looked at the, those that ran, and it was pretty easy to pick out somebody that we thought would complement the, the existing council. However, it didn't work out that way this time. And whenever, you know, you have a good board that's working together, and, and they're communicating well, and there's not a consensus to bring in someone, there's not a consensus. So we did go down that avenue, we did look at those persons who ran, and, and, you know, in the final judgment, and I believe this, and I think, I'm speaking for my peers, that we chose the best person out there for the job. So there's no fix, there's no whatever you read out there in social media or whatever. It was a good decision by my peers, and I'm, I'm really thankful to you guys for all the thought and conversations we had over this. The, this, the master park plan, I'm really looking forward to seeing that. And if this pad, this, I call it a sports pad, if it, if it works out, and this is what the public and council wants, then let's go for it. If it's something that maybe we can't afford right now, then maybe we just put it on a shelf for the next year. But I do like the, the approach that we don't have to commit any dollars at this time, it's just a pack claiming. Staff, thanks again for everything. You guys have provided us with timely information regarding, well, regarding everything. We have something that's going on in town with stormwater that, that I found out today. I do have an appointment on Thursday, and so I'll share that with Mr. McIntyre. But you guys do a tremendous job. You know, we have everything that we need at our hands, and whenever we have a, a question, y'all are providing answer so, so fast, it's, it's very impressive. And with that, I hope everyone stays safe, enjoy this wonderful, cool weather we're having. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohn?
I'd just like to say thank you, guys. Appreciate you having confidence in me. Todd, thank you. Todd, thank you for all the nice things you said. And I'll take care of you out in the parking lot. For saying all those nice things. I'm only kidding, but, but I appreciate, I appreciate all of you having the confidence. Mayor, I appreciate you, your confidence and calling me and, and it's a, it's an honor to work here, it's an honor to, to work with you guys. And I'd like to congratulate our new town manager. I've heard a lot of nice things about you, to be honest with you, I've heard a lot of good, good things about you. And one of the things I want to do on council for my 14, 15 month is be a little quieter. So I'm going to quit right now and quit talking, so. Good to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntyre?
So, Mike, welcome. Pleasure to have you. Look forward to some good things with you. I like the updates, by the way. Answers a lot of questions, so that, that's pretty good. Captain James, you and your team, you know, you guys, you know, we love you guys, we love what you do, happy for your service, keeping our town safe. Ms. Quinn, I appreciate you keeping me on track there, making sure that the motions that I make are sound. Counsel, appreciate all of you. David Cohn, welcome back. I know how you feel because I've been here before, but it's a pleasure to work with you again. Happy to have you back on the council. Mr. Mayor, your leadership, also your fearlessness, the things that you've gone through from a health perspective, you, I, I admire that, honestly. If you ever need a hand, I'm always here for you, you know.
There we go again.
But I thank you. Abby, thank you for keeping us on track there. And staff, you know, Mike, we, we, we know everybody said this, but we really do believe it, we have a wonderful staff here, you know, we, we really do and we appreciate them. And I'm going to have to give Karen a report on you, but you, you have a passing grade. So, good job tonight, thank you very much. Chris, thanks for coming and everybody drive safe, have a good evening.
Thank you. And our terminal is Mayor Albers.
We still got a couple hours. Thank you all for coming again. This is going to be the only time you get this, so enjoy it, welcome. Welcome. It's going to be an honor to work with you. It's been a quick meeting, we're not going to hold it up. Just remember, Friday is September 11th. Please keep in your thoughts and prayers those that perished and that fateful day and I believe the best way to honor them is to honor their memory by spreading a little kindness, something that we've been missing so dearly lately. David? There's been no more honorable person to serve the people of Indian Trail, present company excluded. Vanya, you're welcome back.
Thank you.
And that's it, everybody, good night, God bless. Nope, Marcus, I don't have any undermined jokes tonight, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So no closed session?
No, no, that joke, that joke sold two weeks ago.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Unless David would like to go, for old time's sake.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to adjourn, all in favor? Okay, everybody have a blessed week.